Start recording. And I'll just make sure that is good. Okay, we are now good to go. Okay, so yeah, let's just quickly look through this formula sheet that I put together of all the like whatever, the formulas that seem relevant to the test, which could possibly be on there. I mean, I don't think he's gonna ask anything about signal energy or signal power, but these were formulas. We did some examples like this, so blah, blah, blah. Definitely know this stuff, definitely know determining the sum of two periodic signals. If the sum of two periodic signals is periodic, so if the ratio of their fundamental frequencies is rational, they're periodic, and so then the resulting frequency will be this. We've done this before, but anyways, we'll do an example today. So that's that. Then properties of the delta function. I mean, this one's pretty self explanatory. This one's we've, I mean, we've like, of course, talked about all these ones, but like anyway, so like the integral is one. A times the integral is k. The sampling property where you like it turns into X of capital T. And then sampling property again, basically. Do I think we'll have power and energy on it? I don't know. Probably not, to be honest, probably not. Almost definitely not, I'd say, actually. The more that I think about it, I haven't seen it on any previous midterms, so. It is probably good to know as well, even an odd components. I don't know if it's gonna be on there, but just remember the formulas. It's good to know. In chapter two, just remember like what that looks like. Complex conjugate solutions, we'll do an example of this, but if you have complex conjugate solutions to the to the homogeneous system, right, the equal to zero system, just this guy. Then this is the form you want to write that in. But there's another form too, but whatever. Is that, is there supposed to be a T there? I realized maybe there's not supposed to be a T there. I think there is supposed to be a T there. Yeah, I think there is supposed to be a T. I'll check that. Anyways, then the form of the impulse response, right? Of course, know this, definitely need to know this. So how you figure out B naught? And then how you figure out just the whole impulse response generally, this is important, right? So you set the initial, you solve the homogeneous system again, but this time you use initial conditions where they're all zero, except the last one is one. And then B naught is the, B naught only exists if it's the same kind of differential on either side. And it's the coefficient of the highest one here. We'll do an example, I'm just sort of saying. You, yeah, this is an alternate way of doing that. Where are we? What happened? Where did I go? This is an alternate way of doing it. I don't think I need to have J sign. That like that, that is an equivalent formula, what you're saying right there. There's like another way to express this, which is how we usually do it. But this seems to be how he does it in the course usually, and it is kind of how I do the examples usually with this formula, so. So, so yeah, that's it. Then, so these are, this is important to know. convolution, the formula, obviously. convolution properties, commutative, so you can switch the order. People ask this a lot in the chat, like before on server, so yes, you can switch the order. Associativity, distributivity, we'll do these examples. But anyways, this shift property, I don't know if it's gonna be, so I just, I just went through the notes. What seemed like possibly important formulas, this is what I want. I mean, I haven't posted anywhere yet. I posted in the Discord server, but I haven't posted anywhere like public, like that public. So I will put it in the description of the YouTube video. That's what I'll do, put in the description of the YouTube video. So then Bevo stability is an important thing to know, right? So could be asked that, quite possibly could be asked that. Oh yeah, causal signal, I forgot to mention this. This is like something that I found while doing the homework. Noticed that the homework is mostly like the, the example problems in the lecture and the example problems in the, on the quizzes and the example problems in the. Let me rephrase, I'm sorry. There's a weird difference between the homework problems and the lecture problems. That's what I'm trying to say. There's a weird like difference. So he, so this turned up in the homework problems, it never turned up in lecture. But basically, if they're both causal, so this is a causal signal for sure, because it's zero. Because u of t is zero and then one. So it's like you're starting the signal at t equals zero. So it's causal, they're both causal, because nothing happens before it's t equals zero. That's what it means to be, that's what it means to be a causal signal. A causal signal is zero. The whole, the whole signal is zero until zero, until t equals zero. And then it's whatever after. So if there's, if you're conjugating two causal signals, especially with this u of t like this, you can just sort of ignore the u of t like that, and then the integral is from zero to t. It's just kind of a formula. It was necessary to solve some homework problems, so that's why I included here. He didn't mention it in lecture, so can't imagine it would be in the exam, but just mentioning it. Well, maybe do an example like that, I don't know. Bevo stability and then asymptotic stability, just remember the rules here, we'll do an example. These are important to remember, I don't have these memorized. I don't remember these, so I have, that's something I have to put in my brain. And then the Fourier series coefficients, blah, blah, blah. This is not too hard to remember, just there's a negative sign here, and that's, that's bad. When you talk about complex conjugate solutions, well, that complex conjugate solutions is like when, you'll see. That's like in lecture, I don't know if it was lecture seven, it was earlier, like when we just started doing the differential equation stuff, sometimes you're, right, when you, when you solve the homogeneous differential equation, right, you either have two real solutions. What was the options? Two, yeah, two real, two unique real solutions, repeated real solutions, or you have complex conjugate solutions, right? Those are the three options. I, it's hard to explain when I'm talking over this, so I'm gonna start doing actual questions in just one minute. But anyway, so, so if you get complex conjugate solutions, then you put it like that. I'll have an example, I have an example of exactly that, so. Fourier series, blah, 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 not that hard. And then these are some, some properties which are important, and we're actually, I have an example for this. So we'll, we'll go through some of these properties here. This is from the textbook, it's just a picture. That's it, that's the whole, that's my whole sheet. So yes, I'll post this sheet, whatever, I'll post it in the description. It is posted in SY, the Discord server, so if you want to look there, you can. So, okay, let's, let's start with the actual content. I'll just put this here. I can see, if anybody has any questions, feel free to unmute. Or just type in the chat, or drive and message me, or they'll also message me on Discord, but I probably won't see it. Oh, didn't mean to open the whole Discord. And then, then we can just talk like that. That's what I'm trying to say. Anyways, let's begin. The first questions I have, formula sheet is pinned, yeah, formula sheet is pinned in 5:32, yeah, that's correct. So move that there. My first example is this stuff, determining if a differential system is linear or not. I found these very confusing, the solutions especially, like I didn't really understand what was happening. So let's, let's go through it a little bit together, and then we can do it. So let's do, I think I chose A, C, and F to do. All right, those are my three choices to do. Again, if you have any questions, let me know. So the question says, for the following systems, determine if the input x and the output y, with input x and input output y, which systems are linear and which ones are nonlinear? So the first one is dy dt, I'm not gonna say of t, because it just takes too long, so 2y equals x squared. So the way you check for linearity, right, linearity is you check if basically if you look at the signal Ax1, and you look at the signal Bx2, right? So some scaled version of some signal, some other scalar of some other signal. Send these through the system separately. Right, send these through, so this is the notation I use to, you know, send it through the system, and then combine the results, right? Combine the results to get something. Now, you compare that to what if you just combine the results, combine the inputs, right? Bx2, send that through the system. And you just get the output, and you just compare, you compare this, and you compare this. So that's all fine to say, but how do you actually do that for like a differential equation? That was kind of the confusing part, so let's look at that. And if my face ever covers something, tell me. Oh, that's not what I meant to do, sorry. That gives, probably gives someone a heart attack. Okay, so let's start. So the way you do this, you approach this is to begin, let's just assume that x1 goes to y1, right? As a signal, the signal y1, a signal x1 becomes y1 through the system. So what that means is if I'm assuming this is true, that means I know that this equation is also true, that dy1 by dt plus 2y1 equals x1 squared. And similarly, and if I scale it, right, if I scale the in, oh, sorry, let me click something, yeah, yeah. And similarly, if I have x2 becoming y2, then I also know that dy2 by dt equals plus 2y2 equals x2 squared. Can be fine so far. I'll open this up. So from here, so we know that both of these are true. Now, if I multiply, so we know both these equations are true here. If I multiply both of these equations by some scalar, A, and this one by B, and then add them, that's, that's this kind of process here. That's describing this kind of process here. So if I, what I basically do, so this is the first step, when determining linearity, use that color. The second step I'm gonna do is do, you know, K, or I'll call it A, I guess, A times equation 1 plus B times equation 2. And try to simplify. So what that's gonna look like is going to be A times dy dt, dy1 dt plus A times 2y1 equals Ax1 squared. Adding that with B dy2 dt plus B times 2y2 equals B times x2 squared. So again, so far I've done this, and I'm just gonna add these together to get, to get A dy1 dt, oh, there's no A up there. A dy1 dt plus B dy2 dt plus A times 2y plus B times 2y, oh, sorry, 2y1, and this is y2 equals Ax1 squared plus Bx2 squared. So I've added them together, let me recap what I'm doing here, right? So I'm trying to prove this is linear. I think I wrote dy squared. Yeah, I meant dy, I meant y2, yeah, definitely meant y2, thank you. So I want to prove this is linear. I assume that this is true. I'm gonna box what I'm assuming. I'm assuming that this is, this is true, this is true, which leads, which tells me that this is true and this is true. Now, I, I scale it and combine it, which is what this process is describing here, to get this equation here. Now, let's simplify a little bit, right? So I can turn that into, I can turn that into d, dy dt of Ay1 plus By2, just by the linearity property of the derivative. And then I can turn this into 2 Ay1 plus By2. Yeah, and then I can, there's nothing I can combine here, Ax1 squared plus Bx2 squared, x2 squared. Okay, so now I'm here, again, just to make it super clear, this combined into this. This combined into this, and the end stayed the end. I may as well do it on the top instead. Now, what we do is we say, okay, I have this, you know, assuming that these, like with these assumptions, this is also a true statement here. Now, we want to compare this now, we want to compare this to what if I just did this from the beginning? What if I just put in, yeah, what if I just put in for x of t? Yeah, okay, sorry. If this is truly linear, that's what I'm trying to say. If this is linear is a linear system. This is what's always confusing me. If this is a linear system, then this must be true. That if I put Ax1 plus Bx2 into the system, I would get Ay1 plus Ay2. Right, that's kind of the, that's the definition of linear, is that this would be true. Now, let's see what that would look like in terms of the differential equation. In terms of the differential equation, that would look like dy dt Ay1 plus By2 plus 2 Ay1 plus By2 equals Ax1 plus Bx2 squared, right? Because that's what the differential equation is, it's dy dt, 2y x squared. So y is our output, x is our input. So if it's linear, then this, this, then this must be true. And so what you want to do is, you know, I want to compare these two equations, right? You want to compare these two equations and see if, you know, if they form something that's, that's always true. One way that I like to do this, when I'm, when I'm doing this kind of questions, is subtract, sorry, subtract the two equations, that's how I like to think about it. Subtract the two equations, so this is your new equation 1, this is your new equation 2. So do equation 1 minus equation 2. If you get something that's always true, then it is linear. If you get something that is only sometimes true, then it is not always linear. So if we subtract the equations, right? I'll just, I'll copy it basically. If we, if we subtract the equations. Right, subtracting them. That cancels with that, that cancels with that, those are the equivalent. Here we have 0 equals Ax1 squared plus Bx2 squared plus, minus Ax1 plus Bx2 squared. So just subtracting the equations, and what we're saying here is that Ax1 plus Bx2 squared equals Ax1 squared plus Bx2 squared. And you just have to ask yourself now, is this always true? Or is this just conditionally occasionally true? It's only true if either of these are zero. So it's not always true, it's not always true, right? Not always true. Therefore, system, system is not linear. This process seems to be like a always works kind of way to do this kind of thing for differential. Every other way that I see in the solutions, it's like, it feels like it's kind of, I don't know, I don't know what the conclusion is. I don't understand the conclusion, but here at least, like I feel like I understand the conclusion. So again, just to recap what I've done here is I've taken, I've assumed x1 goes to y1, x2 goes to y2. That means we know these two equations are true. I'm gonna scale each one and add it together, right? And then I end up with this, so then I end up with this. And if my assumptions are true, which I'm just assuming they're true, then this is also a true equation. So then what I like to do is just say, okay, if this was linear, then this would be true, which means this is true, right? Just replacing this is x and this is y. And now you just want to compare these two, compare these two equations. Is it, is it like, by comparing them, you can subtract them, see what the difference is. If, if these two equations were identical, then you would get 0 equals 0, right? And that's always true, so that's, I mean, it's always linear. But if there is any non-identicalness, right? Then you know it's not a linear system. So I subtract them, I get this, not always true, but it's not linear. So much easier than the way I said these assignments, I think it just makes more sense. I don't know, yeah, I guess it's easier, I don't, hopefully it's easier, that's good to hear. But it's, I think it just makes more sense than what they did in these assignments. Won't there be a middle term? Yeah, like, like here, that, that's what you mean. There will be, so that's not always true, like this is not always true that this is, that these are equal, right? Which means it's not linear, I think that's what you mean, right, there will be a middle term. Okay, we're done with the question, not linear, the answer is not linear. I'll do one more example like this, we don't have to worry too much about it. Like I think in previous midterms, there hasn't been that much of differential equation stuff, but just whatever, just it's good to practice. Let's try, let's try one that's linear. So, bug, not to give it away, but this is linear. So let's do f and see what the process looks like if it's linear. And then you can try this one too, it's not linear either, is it linear? Yeah, not linear, of course. Okay. So let's try, let's try this process, same process with this. So again, I'm gonna assume x1 goes to y1. So what this means is that dy1 by dt plus sine t y1 equals dx1 by dt plus 2x1. Great, now I'm gonna assume x2 goes to y2. Dy2 by dt plus sine t y2 equals dx2, dx2 by dt plus 2x2. Great, these are my assumptions, again, I'll just box them, so we see what our assumptions are. Now, I'm going to scale each one, this is my equation 1, this is my equation 2. I'm gonna do A times 1 plus B times 2. And this would, this will get me A dy1 dt plus A sine t y1 equals A dx, dx1 dt plus 2Ax1. Sorry, and I have to put more terms here. So then I have plus B dy2 dt, it can be out here, plus B sine t y2. And then here we have B dx2 dt, and then here we have 2Bx2. I created this equation, I'll now simplify a little bit, right? So the derivatives are linear, so we can say d dt, this is Ay1 plus By2. And then with these terms, A sine t y1, B sine t y2, I can just factor out a sine t, right? This is gonna be plus sine t times Ay1 plus By2. And same kind of derivative business on the other side here, so it's gonna be Ax1 plus Bx2. And then factor an A, a 2 from those two terms, so it's 2Ax1 plus Bx2. And there we go, we've simplified. Now, let's check if this matches with what a linear system would do. So if it was linear, let's say if s was linear. Then what? Well, if s was linear, then Ax1 plus Bx2 would yield Ay1 plus a By2. Well, what does that exactly mean in terms of the equation? In terms of the equation, that means it's gonna be d dt, A, it's the y here, so Ay1 plus By2 plus sine t times Ay1 plus By2 equals d dt, I'm just matching the original differential equation, right? Putting x, this in for x, and this in for y. And so Ax1 plus Bx2 plus 2Ax1 plus Bx2. So again, now I have a new equation 1, equation 2. I want to compare these two, right? I want to see, are they any different? Well, I'll just subtract them, right? And if you do that, every term cancels, you get 0 equals 0, this is always true, always true. True, so the system linear. So that's kind of my method of doing this. Yeah, that's kind of, I don't know, that's how I, that's how I like to approach it. Definitely did not understand when I first looked at the solutions, I definitely did not understand what's going on. But anyway, that's, that's that. Okay, so if there's no questions about this, I'll just keep going, but feel free to unmute or type in the chat or whatever. Otherwise, I will try a previous midterm question, which I think is gonna be a little bit more similar to what we have. Similar style though, right? So we have to determine if this system is time invariant, linear, memoryless, and causal. I keep, I always almost say casual, causal. So the way we determine this, well, let's just do one at a time. I'll do linear first, just because we've been talking about linearity. But now notice this, this system is not defined by a differential equation, so we don't have to do that whole method I just talked about. So I'll just write down the system, so the output y of t is cosine of negative 2 pi t multiplied by x of t. So to determine if it's linear, wait, can you shrink the question? I can't see all of it, yes. Better? I have a lot of, a lot of windows, so I don't have enough screens, gotta get more screens. Okay, that should be it. Now I can see if I'm covering. So, what was I saying? Linear, let's do linear first. So if it's linear, that means that A times x of t into the system, into the system. And then B times x of t, or yeah, x1 of t, x2 of t, into the system. Combine these outputs. You should get something, you should get something, right? And you want to compare this with if you put in Ax1 of t, whatever, plus Bx2 into the system. With this, you want to compare, are these the same, right? That's what you want to compare. So let's do that, let's put Ax1 into the system. So if I put, let's do it for Ax1 here, so for Ax1. If I put Ax1 into the system, my output is y of t equals A cosine negative 2 pi t x of t, x1 of t. If I put Bx2 into the system, my output would be, that's why 1, so this is y2. Y2 would be B cosine negative 2 pi t x2 of t. Now I want to compare, what if I put A, A, Ax, oh, sorry, and now I want to add these together. I want to add these two outputs together, that's, that's this process here, right? So I want to add these two outputs together. And I want to get, and I would then get that y1 plus y2 is the sum of the two. I don't want to write everything again, so I'm just gonna copy and paste it, but the sum of the two. Put it there. So we have this, looks like I have a turtleneck, I don't mean to look like I have a turtleneck. There you go, I don't look like a turtleneck. So now I want to compare this, I say, okay, if this was linear, then when I put in Ax1 plus Bx2, right? I should get this, well, let's see, what happens when I put Ax1 plus Bx2 in? Well, my output is y would be, well, it would be cosine of negative 2 pi t times Ax1 plus Bx2. And again, I want to compare these two, right? I want to compare this and this, so you could subtract it, whatever. But anyways, you can just try to factor it into the same thing. So y1 plus y2, you factor out a cosine 2 pi t, you get cosine negative 2 pi t. Ax1 of t plus Bx2 of t, which clearly, clearly this and this are equal. So, not x of x, I meant of t. So the system is linear. That's it. Let's do time invariance. So the way I like to do time invariance is, so time variance, I guess. The way I like to do time variance is if I take some signal x of t, I put it into the system, and then delay it. I mean, this is not just my method, like this is how you do it, I don't mean to say like I invented this. And you get some output, and otherwise, you can also just put x of t, can delay it, and through the system. And again, you want to compare these two results. If they are the same, then time invariant. They are different, it's time variant. So let's do it, I'll do path number one and then path number two. So path number one is I take my signal x of t, I put it through the system. Okay, what's, what's next? So let me do that, x of t, I put it through the system. I get what out? Well, I get cosine of negative 2 pi t x of t. I now delay it by, you know, t naught. This will look like this will look like now, oh, you just replace t with t minus t naught. So you say this is now cosine of negative 2 pi t minus t naught. X of t minus t. Great, we did that, now let's do path number two. You take a signal x of t. You put it through a delay. You get from that x of t minus t naught. My handwriting is really bad today, I don't know why, sorry. Not sure why. Then you put it through the system. And you, well, what do you get out? Well, you get cosine negative 2 pi t times x of t minus t naught. So the t minus t naught doesn't apply to this t, because the system itself is multiplying by that cosine negative 2 pi t. So these are clearly, these are not equal, right? These are not, I should say clearly, these are not equal. And so that means that this is not time invariant, which means this is time variant. Yeah, I can explain that again. This is This is the T minus T naught. Yeah, so basically like you just, like at the end here? The, the system itself, why doesn't it play? Well, because the system itself, what is it doing? It's taking the input signal, it's multiplying it by cos of negative two pi T, right? So that's what we're doing. We're taking the signal or multiplying it by cos of negative two pi T, right? The delay already happened. The delay already happened to the signal. That's what creates the signal. From the perspective of the system, it's just getting this new signal, X of T minus T naught. And it does what it's designed to do, multiply it by cos of negative two pi T. So it does that, multiplies it by cos of negative two pi T. Uh, so there's no reason, this doesn't know, this T doesn't know anything about the, the delay cuz the delay already happened. From the perspective of the system, it's just getting the signal. Um, so yeah, the, the, the way I understand it is delay the output and delay the input. Yeah, delay the output, that's what I'm doing. Delay the output, delay the input. And then compare the, compare the uh results of all that. Yeah. That is very correct. Question?
So for the, for the second line, like the very last line, first we're delaying it. And so now that we're sending the delayed signal into it, we were only delaying the X of T portion, we're not affecting the cos.
Yeah, cuz the system, the system is, the, the, the relationship between input, output is that it multiplies the input by it, by negative two pi T.
Okay.
Right? So it'll do that to whatever signal gets in. Okay, um, that's that. So we've determined if it's time variant or time invariant. Let us continue. Whoops, that's a two. But anybody feel free to stop me if you have any questions. No problem. So um, uh, what's it called? Memoryless now. Me, more, we. Uh, well, I think it is. I mean, look at it quickly. So memoryless is just like, could you ever type in? Could you ever um make it so that Y of T is equal to X of anything except T? So for example, T minus two or something like that, right? Or T plus two, or two times T, something like this, right? Um, so this is definitely memoryless because there's no example that I can make for that, right? So this is definitely a memoryless system. The, the reason is, is like for every um, uh, for, for all T, because, so memoryless is my conclusion. Because um, well, for all, but I won't say that, for all. Uh, T naught, um, Y of T naught does not, I'll just type it. Does not rely on any past or future values. That's it. Kind of an eyeballing one. You guys kinda eyeball it, say like, is there any T naught I can put in here that would make it rely on future value? So if I, if I put in like T naught equals five, then it'd be Y, Y of five would be something. Some constant, whatever, but doesn't matter, some number, times X of five. That's fine, right? At, at time T equals five, the output is specifically determined by uh X at five. Uh, past and future values, oh yeah, of X of T, yeah, of X, that's, thank you. Yeah. So memoryless and then causal. Uh, well, yeah, yeah, it's uh, if it's uh, if it's memoryless, it's causal. So that's basically it. But causal just requires um causal just requires, how do I explain it? Uh, if it's memoryless, it's definitely causal. Causal means that it only relies on past or uh present values of X of T. But this system only ever relies on present values of X of T. So that's, that means it's causal, which is fine. It, it, it never relies on future values. It never relies on future, you, sure, values. That's fine, excellent. Well, we've already shown that here, right? We've, I mean, we haven't really shown it, but we've claimed that in the first part. So if it's memoryless, it's definitely causal. Um, that's it. That's the whole question. Should I do another one? There's another example from that midterm. Like similar question, but just a different, different signal. Would you be interested, anybody? What do you think? Or should I just move on? Okay, I got, I got one, do it. So that means I'm gonna do it. One more, why not? Okay, great. I'm getting do some more, so. I got one, I got one, move, move on. Let's just do the time invariance for this one. Or, yeah, let's just do the time, we'll just do two quick parts. Let's just do time invariance. Variance. Um, and then, or is it A? And then let's also do the, you know, whatever, memoryless, memoryless such causal. Let's just start with time invariance cuz a little, a little scary, but yeah, anyways. So um, this is, this is the only thing that like can cause some, some trouble. So time variance, okay. So remember, this is the, the, the process is you take X of T, you put it through the system. What do you get out? Well, you would get out X of T minus two plus two X of three minus T. Then you send it through a delay. And remember the delay, what it does, it just replaces X of T in its place with X, uh, right? It replaces T in its place with T minus T naught. So this is going to be X of T minus T naught, minus two. Uh, plus two X of three, oh sorry, three uh, three minus in brackets, T minus T naught. In place, it replaces T with T minus T naught. Great, so now let's compare this to if I put it through the delay first. Right? Well, and the delay would be X of T minus T naught, E minus T naught. Now I'll put it through the system. What do I get? Well, through the system, what does it do? It just, it just does what it says. So this is going to be um, uh, X, yeah.
Adam. Uh, if, if we're delaying our uh output after the initial system on the, the line above, shouldn't it be three minus T, no brackets, minus T naught?
This always confuses me. Yeah, why do you say that?
Uh, because if we are applying the input of uh T minus T naught into the signal, then that should be the output. But if we're just moving it along uh the axis, then we should apply it after any transformations carried on to T.
I'm sure if it carried on to T, okay, so yeah, you do do that first. Okay, okay, so you're saying this should be T mi, this should be minus T, mine, uh, yeah, minus, no. Still minus, yeah, minus T naught, minus T naught, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I always screw that up. Yeah, the, that makes sense. Yeah, so
I think, I, I, I'm not sure.
After, after we apply this. Okay, yeah, this, I always, I always get this exact thing that we are talking about wrong. So my notes have it how I had it originally.
Wait, yeah, I think it, for me, I would argue that it was the original one because you're, you're delaying the output of the signal. So you're actually delaying Y, Y of T minus T naught. So you're replacing every T with T minus T naught.
That's my understanding, is that in place, every T is replaced with T minus T naught. Yeah. Okay, I have some other agreements in the chat with me, so I think I might switch it back.
Can you, perfect. Can you show us an example of it not being time invariant? Do you have one of those as well, maybe after?
Well, this is not time invariant.
Oh, this is not time variant, okay.
This is time variant, so there you go. Okay, so I'll, oh sorry, that was, right? Um, so I'll switch this back. So there's gonna be a bracket here now. Okay. Yes, I can check to me, that's true. Oh yeah, that's true. Yeah, actually I did that. And that, my, well, his, the way he writes is kinda weird sometimes. But anyways, uh, this is the right, I think. This is right, I think. So uh, now I'll send this through the system. Through the system. Uh, it would look like this. X of T minus T naught, minus two, plus two X of uh three minus T minus T. This is just one of the transformations that were applied. Um, and so now we see that these are not, these are not equal, right? Because of this little, what we're, what we're discussing at the end here, right? Negative T minus T naught is not the same thing as minus T minus T naught. Cuz this would be negative T plus T naught. So this means that this is time time invariant, a time variant. The way I always get, shouldn't it be T minus T naught? Sure. That doesn't make a difference though, yeah. But that doesn't, that doesn't change your answer. So oh, page eight of homework solutions two, okay. Thank you. Let's see. Is it the same question exactly? Same concept, okay, yeah, yeah. With a negative sign, yeah, yeah, yeah. Page eight, yeah. Delay the input, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, 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 for sure. But I, I have a, I have an example that's like that, we could do it after, I don't know. So this is time invariant. The way I remember it, the way I remember it, is that if there is something multiplying T directly, it is time variant. I think I said the wrong thing, it's time variant. If there's anything multiplying T directly, it is time variant. So just figure it out from there where the brackets should go to show that it is time variant. So if I know from looking at this, there's a negative one multiplying T, that this is gonna be time variant, not, not invariant. Then I, I can't do this process and in the end have it that they're equal. So I have to do some bracket business to make it so they're not equal. And another thing that I remember is that in place, when you do the delay, in place, T is replaced with T minus T naught. So with brackets. Um, but here it's, just put it. Cuz it's just minus T minus T. It's just part of one of the transformations, just you do it and then minus T. So yeah. That's that. Kinda confusing, but I'm happy we did it, happy we did it. The solution. Put it, who knows where I put it? This is it, this. Uh, system is not time invariant. Uh, what is it, right? This is what I have for the solution that's in front of me. Does it match what I just described? I mean, the answer is definitely the same. Um, so shift the input, if you shift the input, which is, which is this, right? That's this here. Um, then we should get this, which is what I said. If I shift the output, which is this first one, we should get this, also what I said. So that's not the same, yes. Right, uh, let's see what Dexter said. So basically if delayed output equals delayed input, system does not depend on time, time variant. If delayed output does not equal delayed input, system does not time, yes, that is true. Right, so if these are not equal, then uh, that means the system does depend on what, depend on if there's a delay or not. The output of the system, so that means it is time variant. Okay, uh, let's move on. Uh, why not put T minus T naught in the brackets? Just because I, you treat it like it's just another transformation that's happening, that happened to it, right? So it does the system and then there's just a, mine, it, it does the, yeah, it goes to the system. And it's minus T naught is uh, just like another shift that happens, like a shift that happened earlier. So you just put it there without brackets. Yeah, a little weird, a little bit weird. Um, okay, so let's, let's move on though. So I will stop this. Let's do uh, I'll just move on to actual differential equation stuff. So uh, this one, I want to find find the zero input response for this one. The zero input response is not the impulse response, but it's just like if there's zero input, right? That's, I mean, that's basically it. So this is what we've, this is the thing we did in MTH, whatever, MTH three twelve. Um, so you, you're basically just trying to solve the differential equation, D squared plus nine. Y of T equals zero. So of course, this is lambda squared plus nine equals zero. This is lambda equals plus minus three J. Um, which means complex solutions, complex conjugate solutions. Let's look at my formula. Uh, where did the formula go? Look at my formula. That's why I mentioned this. Complex conjugate. I don't know, can everybody see still? There's my notes. What do we do? Well, this is where we say, okay, Y naught is equal to E E to the zero T times cosine of three T plus theta. This is of course just cosine of three T plus theta. Uh, so this is Y of zero, uh, sorry. I'm missing something. There's supposed to be another, oops, this was supposed to be another unknown variable. Uh, C, there's a C here, that's what I forgot, there's a C. My formula is missing a C. There's a C here, there's a C here, but I can't put a C there. Put a C, put a C, C naught or something, C one. And theta. Formula's missing a C, I'll just put, put the C, I'll fix that in the notes. Um, so now this is C one, cosine three T plus theta. Now, we know, uh, well, let's find the derivative. So Y dot is um, uh, derivative cos of the negative sign. So negative uh, three sine three T plus theta. That's the derivative. Um, so now we know that Y, say again?
Uh, you're missing C one.
I am missing C one, thank you. Negative three C one. And da, 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 um, thank you. So then this, we know that this is equal to zero. So we know that uh, C one cosine theta equals zero. And we know that the derivative at zero is equal to six. So at six, this is negative three C one sine of um, sorry, at zero, it's equal to six. So at, at zero, it's negative three C one sine theta. We have these two equations, two unknowns. Of course, we can solve it. The way that I like to do this is, uh, okay, so, so first of all, let's look at the first equation. Zero equals C one cosine theta, right? Uh, well, uh, C one could be zero. What's, what are the options here? Either C one is zero or cosine theta is zero. Uh, C one is probably not zero. Sorry, C one equals zero or cosine theta equals zero. C one's probably not zero, cuz if C one was zero, then the whole response would be zero. Um, so I guess that's an option, like, yeah, I guess, I guess that is an option. Uh, oh no, but I wouldn't solve this other one. So if C one was zero here, then we'd have six equals zero. So C one can't be zero. There we go. Uh, but you should also do this method if the roots were one plus two J and one minus two J. Yeah, you would also do this, you just have, you just have alpha equals one here. Right, you have alpha equals. Yeah, it'd be the same thing though, yeah. They just, they're just, they're always gonna be conjugates, so. So C can't be zero, so we know that C one can't be zero. So that means I just have to figure out where is cosine theta equals zero? And it doesn't actually really matter what, what theta you pick. I mean, it's periodic, so uh, I'll just choose pi over two. So that means theta equals pi over two. Cosine pi over two is zero, right? Yes, I think so. I just trust myself. Um, cosine pi over two is zero. Uh, so there is our solution for theta. It doesn't matter what you choose. I think in the solution manual, they chose negative pi over two, it doesn't matter. You'll get the same answer. Um, so now that I've chosen that, I can find C one, right? Cuz C one is going to be six over negative three sine theta. Uh, oh, that's an issue. Why is that an issue? Six over negative three sine theta, sine pi over two is, oh no, it's not an issue, nevermind. Uh, so uh, six over a negative three sine pi by two, which is um, six over negative three, which is negative two. So my zero input response, Y naught of T, is my original expression here, this guy. But just substituted in with what I want. Like that. So I found that this is negative two cosine three T plus pi over two. If you chose theta to be negative pi over two, you'll get a different C value, it doesn't matter. You'll get two. I got rid of three T because T equals zero, yeah. Uh, so there's our zero input response, right? Remember, the total response of uh, the total response response of a system is equal to the zero input response plus the zero state response, right? Zero input responses we just calculated, zero state response is X of T unvoluted H of. Right? That's the zero state response. The sum of these is the total response. But you're only ever usually asked to find one or the other in a question, so. Um, yeah, so what we did right now is we, we found the zero input response. Yeah, this simplifies to two sine three T, yeah, probably. I'll leave it like this, but yeah. My board of trig identities probably says that. Um, so yeah, so that's, we just found the zero input. Great, there's no questions, I will keep moving. Uh, uh, let's, I, you know, I, you guys probably did a lot of the practice, so let's, I won't do an easy one. I'll jump right to a Uh, uh, let's, I, you know, I, you guys probably did a lot of the practice, so let's I won't do an easy one. I'll jump right to a tricky one. Let's find the um, let's find H of T for this one. So H of T. For this. This this wasn't a practice. This wasn't a homework problem. Like, the homework problem was find the zero zero input response, right? But. Um. Now I'm I'm extending it. Let's say let's find H of T for this. So uh, H of T, we know the formula, H of T equals uh, B naught. Delta T. Plus. Uh, P D. Uh, Y N of T. U of T. So. B naught. First of all, let's identify what B naught is. H of T, H of T is the zero state response. H of T is a zero state response. If there are no initial conditions, then it is the total response. Right? He was pretty unclear about this in the lecture, so this stuff like they didn't really explain this totally in lecture. This is like more from the textbook. But, yeah, the the zero state response is X of T. Times, well, completed with that H of T. That's the zero state. Again, if there's if there's no initial conditions, then that is also the total response. Um, so so let's find B naught. B naught is equal to, well, compare each side. Is the degree of this polynomial equal to the degree of this polynomial? If no, it's zero. If it was equal, if the degree was equal, then it's the coefficient, the leading coefficient on this side. On this side, but they're not equal, so it's not. So this whole term goes. Fantastic. What's P of D? P of D equals D squared plus two. Great. What's Y N? Y N is the, again, the solution to the homogeneous system, right? The solution to um, the solution to, let me just do. Y N of T equals solution to. The homogeneous system, D squared, D plus one. Um, equals zero. Oh, what whatever, Y N. Y of T equals zero. With the following initial conditions. Y N of zero equals zero. Y N derivative of zero equals one. Is here, all the derivatives, all all the initial conditions are zero except the last one, which is one. Um. Oh, sorry. And then. No, that's it. That's all I need, right? Make sure that's all I need. Yeah. No, I need a double derivative. Yes, I need another derivative. Sorry, this one more, because it's it's one, you gotta go to one less than the highest power here, so you gotta go one more. So this is actually zero. Dot, dot, and of zero. There. Um. So. Let's do this. Let's solve the differential equation, D squared, D plus one, Y N. Y of T, I mean, equals zero. Well, we do this by lambda squared. Lambda plus one equals zero. What are the solutions here? Lambda equals zero, zero again, and negative one. I'll list it twice on purpose. So what that tells us about the solution, it's like the the. The form of the solution. Is that Y N is going to look like this. Let's let's get ready. So C one, E to the zero T. I have a repeated root, so this is now going to be C two T E to the zero T. I put the T because it's a repeated root. And then I just have another C three E to the negative T. But this, of course, E to the zero T is one, so this is C one plus C two T plus C three E to the negative T, and that's the form of Y N. That's pretty much the hardest part of the question is that. So everything else is not, it's pretty straightforward. This one you just have to think about for a second. You have a repeated root, zero, but still repeated root. So it's this. And then from there on, it's that. You have three unknowns, so you need three initial conditions. Um, the last one is one, the rest of them are zero. So you do that. So uh, I'll take the derivative. So Y N dot is equal to C two minus C three E to the negative T. And Y N double dot is equal to, well, it's going to be C three E to the negative T. Um. And uh, so the initial conditions are zero, zero, one, right? So if I do Y N evaluated at zero, right, evaluated at T equals zero. This is going to be, well, it's just going to be C one plus C three. Which is equal to zero from initial conditions. If I do Y N derivative evaluated at T equals zero, this is just going to be, well, C two minus C three, and that's equal to zero as well. And then if I do Y double derivative evaluated at T equals zero, this is just going to be C three, and that's equal to one. This stuff, this, how did I know all these, whether these are, what these are all equal to? These are the given initial conditions, right? This is just from a value. From here, it's pretty simple to solve. So C one is equal to negative one, C two is equal to one, C three is. Uh, is that what I got before? Hopefully. Yeah, that's what I got. Um. So there's my initial stuff, so that lets me find Y N. So therefore. Y N is equal to negative one plus T plus or minus? No, plus. Yeah. E to the negative T. Make sure that's what I got. Why B naught was zero? Yeah, B naught was zero. So the way you the way you analyze for B naught, oh, I forgot to mention at the start. I'll just put it at the start here. I have my notes available for this course, right? So you can look at my notes. Um, you can uh, whatever. What's the word? Not obtain. Obtain my notes. That's what I'm trying to say. Just like, see my notes. But. Why is it not typing? All right, let me uh. Do this quickly. There we go. See. My notes. At www dot tutorial dot C A slash notes, and I have notes for this course available there. Um, the reason I mention that is because I have a little, I have a little chart on that set of notes. If Notion would like to load. Um. There we go. And we can scroll down to uh. Unit input. There you go. So B naught is, I guess I have in that formula sheet I also said, but. B naught is zero if the degree of this polynomial is not the same as the degree of this polynomial. It's just automatically zero. But if they are equal, if the degree is equal of both sides, that means you just take the coefficient, the coefficient of the leading coefficient of this polynomial, so coefficient on the highest degree term. But they're not like for our case here, the degree is not equal. Where am I going? Here? Yeah. For our case here, this is the degree three polynomial, this is the degree two polynomial. So automatically. B naught zero. Just automatically. Okay, so now we know Y N. Again, what's our goal? What's all this? What's happening? Well. This is what's happening. We have uh, we're looking for H of T. This is zero, so I can just go away. Uh, what do we need to find? Well, we found Y N, so now we need to do P D Y N, right? So Pete, what's happening? Okay, P D Y N is um. If it was, yeah, the the leading coefficient, the highest degree. We can do an example like that. Is there an example? I'll just do the beginning of the example. For another, yeah, it's like the leading coefficient of this side. Um, so so here, P D Y N is this, so P D. Y N is equal to, what's P D? P D is D squared, um, yeah, D squared plus two. D squared plus two. What's Y N? Y N is negative one plus T plus E to the negative T. So the second derivative of this plus two times itself, right? Well, what's the second derivative? So let me just quickly find that. Y N derivative is just um, one, one minus E to the negative T. Y N double dot is just going to be E to the negative T. Right? Yeah. Add that here? Yeah, E to the negative T. I don't know why I'm doubting myself. Yes, there you go. Um, so we need the second derivative, E to the negative T plus two times the original one, so minus two plus two T. Plus two E to the negative T. And this will, of course, simplify to three E to the negative T plus two T minus two. And that is your P D Y N, and so that means your impulse response, uh, H of T. Is three E to the negative T plus two T minus two. All in a unit step function. And that is your impulse response. For this. This. So there you go. That's that. Uh, I'll just keep moving if. We're good with that. Uh, let's do a convolution example. And then uh, and then four A. We got time, we're only. Um. Even nothing, nothing. The 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 fourth, I didn't use that, but because the original question was looking for the zero input response, but I changed the question to be look for the impulse. So for the zero impulse response, you need the initial condition. So, but I I just changed the question to be. The last part? Yeah, what's the last part that I need to explain? Like, like this, this here, so P D Y N, right? Those are the formula for H of T. I need P D Y N. So P D is like the polynomial of derivatives. So D squared represents the second derivative plus two times the actual function. The actual signal. So this is the second derivative. This is the second derivative of Y N, right, of Y N. And then this is. Um, this is this guy. Isn't the derivative of E to the negative T, negative E to the negative T? Yeah, that's correct. So that's what I did here. But where, yeah, that's right. Did I not do that somewhere? I take the second derivative of Y N, yeah. So second derivative of Y N is E to the negative. I think I did my derivatives right, but if I didn't, feel free to tell me where I did my derivatives. This negative, well, it cancels with this negative, right? There's a negative. So this goes away. It's constant, and this is just the negative and the negative. Turned to a positive. That's if that's what you mean. Is there a way to use the general formula with the initial coni- with these initial conditions, like? Like with these ones that I covered, tho- those initial conditions are are used to find something else, not to find H of T. They're used to find the zero input response. So you wouldn't use the general formula with those. The general formula requires that the initial conditions are a specific set that they told you. Um. If it was simply D instead of D squared, what would the answer look like? If it was simply D instead of D squared, um, then it would look like. Um, then P D Y N. P D Y N. Would be one minus E to the negative T. Plus uh, minus two plus two. T. Plus two E to the negative T. So if. This is. If. E D. Equals D plus two instead. Um. Okay, I think I'm good with my derivatives. Expanding also works. Yeah. Yes, you can expand, like, yeah, I. I, yes, just to be, I guess that would probably make it more clear. So if I have D squared plus two. Y N. This is equal to D squared, Y N plus two Y N. Which is equal to D by D T, or D squared by D T squared of Y N. Plus two Y. That's what I'm doing, but I just, I'm just not writing all that out. It's a lot to write out. But that's what I'm doing. Hopefully, maybe that helps someone. So that's that's what I'm computing here. Second derivative, uh, second derivative plus two times the original. Okie dokie. So let's uh, let's move on to convolution. Of course, if there's any more questions, feel free to let me know. By these guys. Um, I went to do one where it's not just sort of flat, because it's kind of. Boring. It's flat. Um, so we got these guys here. Um, so let's do it. I don't know. If I make a mistake, tell me. Uh, I will try my best not to. But of course, it's just like a long tedious process, so who knows? So first thing is draw on tau axis. Draw on tau axis. This is not a super necessary step, but I like to just do it just to. Get the ball rolling. It's like, I know how to do this first step. This is good. Draw on the tau axis. So uh, we'll do that. Uh, this is the tau axis. This is our graph, so it goes to one and it goes to negative two, and it looks vaguely like this. Uh, yeah, like, there we go. And then it's back to zero, of course. Da, da, da. For convolution, do you think we would be able to give, we would be given X one and X two in graph form, or is it possible to be given an equation? I saw one midterm where it was given as an equation, and I saw one midterm where it's given as a graph. So either one, I would I would expect a graph. I would expect a graph. But they're not too crazy to graph if they're given as an equation. Maybe we can do an example of that after, but yeah. So. Uh, I don't know what happened there. Then we'll also draw the other graph on the tau axis. So the tau axis. Looks like this. This is like. This one. Uh, and it's, I guess, I presume it also goes to one up here, although it doesn't actually say that. And then uh. Da, 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 da. There you go. We have that. There's our signals. That is X one. That is X two. Uh, so so let me just be clear here. X one is now E to the tau. X two is now E to the negative two tau. So we gotta decide now, which one are we gonna flip? I will flip E to the T. Generally, flip the simpler function, I think. Flip the simpler function. So. E to the T is ever so slightly simpler than E to the negative two T, so flip. So what does that look like? Flipping over the T axis, I'll say part two is. Flip. X one of T. Or of tau, actually. Across the axis. So what would that look like? Well, now we're gonna get this guy. It's gonna look like this now. One note hates it when I copy and paste. He's, there we go. So flipping it over, the negative two end is gonna go to two now, right? So it's gonna end up here. This is the two, and everything else is basically gonna stay the same. It's just gonna face this way now. So it's gonna look like. This. Like that. So this is now E to the negative tau. Then what I want to do is I want to add T to everything. Um. So what that looks like. Yeah, add T to everything. Yes. So what that looks like, make sure I'm saying the right thing, is this is going to be um, uh, so. Three. Add. T, sorry, just to be clear, but to everything, I mean, add T. Horizontal shift or time shift, whatever. So here, this needs to be E to the negative T, so this will look like this. Copy and paste. Not letting. Is. Uh, but but I'm moving it, so I'm gonna move it over here. That's too far aside, sorry. Going off screen. Here. There. So what is this now? Well, this was at zero, so this is now at T. This is now at two plus T. But our equation is also different. So this is E to the negative tau, and now I have to think for a second. Is this supposed to be E to the negative tau minus T, or it's E to the negative tau minus T? I think it's a plus, plus, it's plus instead of minus, but um. I think it's that. Yeah. I think it's that. Can someone tell me what they think? I think it's that. With a minus, because you just in place replace T with T plus tau. Okay. Great, I'm getting some agreement. So we have now. Set up our uh. Graph. We just have to now put the other graph on there too, right? So this is uh, this is still there. So I'm gonna make it smaller. Doesn't have to be that far. So it goes up to one. I'll just put it in a different color. It goes up to one. And it went to two, I think, or one, it went to one. I put like here. And then it looks vaguely like this. Great. So we now start doing the shifts, right? We start doing the shifts. So this is region one. Region. Region one. So the overlap is nothing, right? So it's zero. The whole thing, the integral is zero, so the the. Um. The the convolution is zero uh, if T plus two is less than uh, zero. Right? If this, if this bound, this edge has not crossed here yet. Once it crosses, then there's overlap, but before that, it's, so if T is less than negative. That is our first region. T is less than negative. Now, let's uh, keep moving this along. Copy and paste is gonna be such an issue that I deal with. There we go. There we go. Uh, this is now. Region two. Only thing I don't get with one note. Okay, region two. Region two happens when uh, you just barely move over the edge here. Right? When, so now we have something here. We don't go too far, because if you go too far, then boom, it's a different region altogether. But here, there's a region when it just enters. Right? So I'll just put it like, put it there. Um, this, there is overlap now, right? There is overlap. So we take the product of the overlap. And then we uh, integrate. So so um. First of all, what is, how do you define this region? This region is defined by uh. Two plus T is greater than zero. Um, but less than one. Pretty much. Right? If two plus T goes past one. Then we have a new region. That the bottom bound won't catch up, won't catch up, right? Um, so that's basically, right? You could, you could say this, which is probably how I would say it, but you could also say that. It's it's this mixed with T is uh, less than zero. T is less than, yeah, two plus T is greater than zero, T is less than zero. So um, you, this can turn into um. This can turn into T is greater than negative two. Uh, but less than zero, so. Uh, T is between negative two and zero. And just, you know. Add your equal to if it just has to connect to the last one. So negative two, then has to connect to negative two. So this, that's probably how I would do it. Probably the more foolproof way of doing it. It's like, it's like. So that's our bound. Uh, wait, are the heights of the two signals the same? Uh, yeah, they both, they, it doesn't actually technically say, but yeah, I mean, E to the negative, yes. Yes, it is. Yeah, the same. Because this is E, I should be clear, this is, this is E to the negative two tau. So at at tau equals zero, it is one. So, yeah. Um, so great, now we do the integral, the integral. Well, what are the bounds? The overlap is between zero and two plus T. Zero and two plus T. And what is the product? The product is E to the negative uh, tau plus T. Times E to the negative two tau. Uh, D tau. That's it. There we go. Uh, we can do the integral. I mean, it's not hard, so. All exponentials. I I won't do every integral, but I'll do this. Zero to two plus T. E to the negative tau plus T minus two tau. I guess I'll distribute the negative in, so negative minus. Uh, D tau. Negative two to negative one. Yeah, that actually makes sense. Yes, 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 you're right. You are right. I thought this worked. This didn't work. You're right. Uh, let me redo the math. So let's just, let's just imagine sliding it. That'll tell us where it, where it ends, right? So once, I can't, I can't pick it up now, because one note will hate me. So uh, the, if if I move. If I move this graph over, once I, once T plus two passes zero, then we're in the region. Once T plus two passes one, we're in a new region. So T plus two. Or two plus T, whatever, has to be between one and zero. Subtracting two from both sides, we have negative T less than. That's our actual. I made a mistake. What I was doing originally was. Uh, so that is our, that is our region two. Uh, so but still, the integral is the same, so it's the integral between uh, zero and two plus T. Of this guy. So we have um, uh, this is the uh, is E to the negative T integral zero, two plus T. E to the negative three tau. E tau. The E to the negative T comes out, and then E to the negative T. Uh. This is um, E uh, one over three tau. One over three. Yes, one, one over, wait, that was zero. Hold on, that's weird. Negative one over three. Oh, not tau, negative one over three. That's. Negative one over three, E to the negative three tau. Evaluate zero to two plus T. There, made a little mistake, but it's right now. Um, and now we have E to the negative T substituted in what you want to substitute in, doesn't really matter. So yeah. It's gonna be negative one third, E to the negative three, two plus T. Um, minus, but there's already a minus, so plus, one third, E, uh, one third, because E to the zero is. That's it. I mean, on the test, I will do the integral, but it's not, that's not at all a stress. So I'm not gonna do all the integrals. I just did one integral just to show you that it can be done. You will get a function of T. And there we go. That's region two. Uh, I'll, I'll actually keep copying this one picture, because they're separate here. Uh, doing this test without one note will be. Challenge, because I can't just slide it, but. Pretty good at visualizing it in my head, so. Thank you for that. Region one, region two. Ah, now we're in region three, right? We have a different integral. Our integral, that's how you, basically how you tell is your integral changes. That's how you can tell. So I wanna do this in a way that doesn't make a total mess, so let me just uh. Maybe move this out the way a little bit. So now I'll move this here. The purple. Purple is still E to the negative two tau. Green is this guy. How did I find the bounds of the integral? Where is it overlapping? That's how you figure it out. Where is it overlapping? Well, it starts, the overlap of the two graphs starts at zero, and then it goes to two plus T. Afterwards, there's no overlap. So the bounds of the integral is the bounds of the overlap. That's right. Yeah, good, sounds good. Do you have any more questions? Uh, in this case, T is a constant. Yeah, T is a constant, yes, because you're integrating with respect to tau. Uh, new region. Region, regions. Our region is region three. This region is valid so long as two plus T is bigger than one. Oh, sorry, did I, this has to line up, so there's an equal sign. Uh, two plus T is greater than one, but also T is less than zero. So what are these conditions? This turns into subtract, subtract two from both sides, you get T is greater than negative one. Uh. Yep, that makes sense, and is less than zero. So there we go. There's our bounds. T is less than zero, but greater than or equal to negative one. I put the equal to just so it lines up with the previous bound. Um, it's great. So now um. We have this with the integral. Well, where's the overlap? The overlap happens between zero and one. That's where the overlap happened. Past one, the purple function zero, below zero, the, well, the purple function is also zero. So there we go. So we just have. Between zero and one. The integral is E to the negative two tau. Uh, E to the negative tau plus T. D tau. Blah, 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 blah. You figure out this integral same way we did before. Uh, she's the same integral, isn't it? Yeah, it's the same integral. Of course, it's the same integral. So. I mean, I guess we could, I could do this, so. I'll just say equals this, but the bounds are now zero and one. So plugging zero, okay, so this will be actually something, E to the negative T. Plugging one in, we have negative one third, E to the negative three, plus one third. That's. That is your. I did the integral there too, because it's simple. Okay. I will continue. Um, I lost the page. So let's keep moving. First. First uh, region, second region, third region, fourth region. We got another region here, right? So this region happens if T, T itself is between. Uh, zero and one, basically. This back bound is between these two. Inside the other function. I'll make it equal to zero just to match up with the last one. Um, and yeah, well, let's figure it out. So the integral here, the integral is from T to one, right? Over is the overlap, T to one. T to one, and same integral, E to the negative two tau, E to the negative tau plus T. D tau. Whatever, whatever, whatever. It's this again. Same integral. Ah. The bounds of the integral are just the bounds of the overlap. Uh, this is from T to one. Uh, let's do it. So it's just E to the negative T, um. Negative one third, E to the negative three, plus one third, E to the negative three T. You can simplify that if you want. It doesn't matter. Great, that's region four, and then we have one last region. Uh, that's region four. I got ahead of myself there. And then we have uh, region five, which is our final one. Region five is uh, just to recap again, the regions, region one. So the integral is zero here. Region two. Oh, our integral is from zero to T plus two. Okay, still integral from zero to T plus two, zero to T plus two, zero. Oh, here, our integral now is zero to one. That's a new region. So first region, second region, third region. Okay, integral is still from zero to one, zero to one. Oh, integral changed. Now it's integral from T to one. Okay, new region, region one, region two, region three, region four. And oh, region changed, uh, integral changed again. Now it's all zero. The integral is just zero. There's no overlap anymore. Right? So this is region five. Region five happens when T is greater than or equal to one, equal to one. Uh, and the integral is zero. Integral equal. Region one and five, they do have immaculate integrals to deal with. Um. For most cases, someone in the chat, for most cases, I came to the realization that for each region, the only part of the integral that you change is the bounds. Does this tend to be the case? Uh, yeah, if, if the, if the uh, like the function, if the signal. Doesn't change. So here it's E to the negative two tau. Here it's E to the negative tau plus two T. Um, but you can have weird signals. You can have weird signals. So maybe it's like, what if this was your signal, right? If this was your signal. And then, then this, whatever, like that. Here it's a line, here it's a constant, here it's a um, uh, like. Exponential. So you need to, the bounds do change. Things change there, right? That's a complicated one. Good. I'm happy that was a good explanation of the, of the regions. Right? Yeah. I'm happy you. Happy that was helpful. Um, so, so yeah, so there we go. So that's, that's it. Our convolution integral is now X one convoluted X two. Let's take a look. It is, uh, at first it was zero. At the end, it's also zero. This is for T greater than equal to one. This is for T less than, I think it was le- uh, less than equal to negative two, I think it was. I just said less than. Less than negative two. Okay, next, our integral for region two was this guy. Right? I ran out of space, so let me just make this smaller. It's this guy. This is for when T was between negative two and. Negative one, I think, not equal to, negative one. Um. That's region one, region two, region three is gonna be this guy. That's when T is between negative one and zero. Make it smaller. This is when T is between negative, negative one and zero. Um, I don't need the equal sign. And then region four is this one. There we go. This is when T is between, uh, what's it called? T is between. Uh, zero and one. And this is the final. That is the, that is the convolution integral. Do we have to summarize? Do we have to write a summarized answer of the different regions on the midterm, or is that optional? Uh, I'm not sure. Do the, do the previous midterms do this? I don't know. If it says compute the convolution, then this is, this is the final answer. This is the convolution. What would the equation of the graph be if we instead flip? And add T to E to the negative T. So the, the equation, if we did that instead, we flipped. We flipped this guy. Say. What if we flip this one? What if? We flipped. Uh, purple. Um, that would be E to the negative two. Tau plus T. But positive. E to the positive tau. That's what it would be. Put this in a weird color. Answer key is different. Okay. Let's see what the answer key says. This is from twenty. Uh, where? This is from twenty eighteen? No, I don't have it. Two point four point twenty seven in the homework. Okay, I will look at that actually. So here, um. What am I looking at? I'm looking for homework assignments. I'm looking for assignment three. Two point four point twenty seven. Is that in the first segment? Yeah, two point four point twenty seven. Uh, yeah, which one is it? It's one of the, I forget which one I chose. H thing. There we go. So. Region one, E to the tau, E to the negative two. Yeah, they did the same thing, actually. I think you mean, like, are you saying there's a negative sign here? Is that your confusion? Oh, wait, no, 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 no. Um, I feel like the one, if you graph your solution and the one in the solutions, you would get the same graph. Yeah, maybe, yeah. Uh, what is the difference? Here, they flipped. E to the tau. That stayed this, they, so in the solution, they didn't flip. In the solution, they flipped this one. Um. And flipping it got. That doesn't make sense. What? E to the T. Minus tau. Why would it be minus? Why would it be minus? I don't understand why it's minus. Yeah, I don't know. That doesn't make sense. Uh. Let me look at the. Um, where am I going? Oh, here. Have to go. Here. Let me uh, let me open up. This. Uh, where are we? That's where we are. So many windows open, so many windows. Thank you, Shy. What is, anyone? Okay, yeah, I don't know. The answer key is weird. I don't understand the answer key. Uh, this is, this is what they did in the answer key. Um, like, everything we've written is correct. Everything we've written is correct, but I were just, what we're discussing now is, is uh, what if we flip the other one? What would the equation of that be? And I, I don't get what they did. So they did, they said that if you do that, the first integral. Is the integral from negative two to T. Integral, whatever, of E to the tau. E to the negative two, T minus tau. But what that means is that one of it's the E to the tau, right, which is the one that we chose to flip, but they didn't flip. So they're flipping the other one. So now I would say that that would be negative two. Tau plus T or T plus tau. They have a minus here instead. That doesn't make sense, because. Okay, let's say first of all, everything is right here, except this is T, like, this is basically what they did, but they subtracted T from everything instead of adding T to it. Um. Which. Doesn't make sense. So maybe I'm, I don't, I don't like to say that. Solutions are wrong, but I feel like they, they did that wrong. They're supposed to add T. That's a fact. Um, put T minus tau wherever. Uh, I think. I think what they do is just replace T. Yeah, that would be right, but we don't wanna move, we have to add T. Right? Like, we have to add. That's the thing. We're moving left. We're, we're starting from the left or we're moving right. That's how we do it usually. Um. Uh, I think they just put T minus tau wherever there is a tau in the original H of tau or flipping and shifting it. I think they just do is replace T with T minus tau. Wouldn't it be X to the tau plus T? Um. E to the negative. flipped this. So you flip it, it would be positive. Yeah, and then you have tau plus t. Yeah, okay, actually, I would say that. That is true. As an e to the negative 2t, e to the negative t minus tau. But that is, like, that's not how we do it. And that's like, not the process of how we usually do it. And that might, that is also doing a translation. That is for sure also doing a translation. But it's doing a translation along the t-axis. Okay, pretend it's not. Oh, yeah, t minus tau would be a translation. Yeah, that would be a translation along the tau axis, but in the wrong direction that we usually do. So you would have negative t values then. So I, all I'm saying is, I, it doesn't make sense how they did it here. It could also be the right answer, but it's not how we usually do it. Because what they did is they, they shifted right instead of shifting left. See how we, this whole thing got shifted left? But they shifted right in the solution. Um, which I guess, uh, you go right and you move left, it probably is the same, not just probably, definitely the same solution, but it's not how we do it usually. If t is less, but then even have the first region is t is less than minus 2. Something's not making sense. But anyways, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna spend too much time on this. Uh, so that is still my answer. That is what the graph would be if we. Uh, okay, so this is unrelated to the question you just solved, but there are times where h of t perfectly fits in x of t, but this isn't considered a region. Why is that? Example blah blah. Well, because at that instant, right, at that instant, what would the integral be? So, uh, the, sorry, at that instant, what would the bounds of the, bounds of the region be? Well, it would be if t is at exactly something. So for example, um, I have another, I have another integral. I, I won't do the whole convolution because I wanna do some Fourier now, but, uh, I, I had another one that I was gonna do. So if you imagine lifting this graph directly on top of this graph, there will be a, a point. You know, whatever. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's some, you reflected and da-da-da-da-da. But e- eventually, you're gonna get something that looks like this on the tau axis. But this, this is only true for an instant, right? It's only true for an instant. So that's just included, that's just included within one of the equal, less than equal to from the thing. So t is between whatever, 2 and 5, I don't know. I'm making up numbers here. But this includes it. If, if you didn't have equal to, sure, give yourself a region where it's just for t equals 2. But we include it already in either, we either include it here, like in, in this region, or we include it in this region. It doesn't actually really matter. The integral will be the same regardless, but, um, it's included. That's why we don't, that's why we don't consider it a region, because it's a region of width 0, basically. It's just a single instant. So that's just included in one of the. I made up, I made up 2 and 5. Okay, good. Okay, uh, let's do some Fourier. Uh, I wanted to do, so I wanted to do a Fourier where we do integration by parts just because I feel like people forget how to do integration by parts, and like, I forget how to do integration by parts, so be good to practice. That also takes a while. That also takes a while. So I, I found this question in 6 point, um. Okay, let's, let's do this question quickly. There's just a little bit to it. Uh, and then let's do one where we try to do the Fourier series. This one, someone sent me this question, so let's just do it quickly. Um, the exponential Fourier series of a certain function is given as this. This is the exponential Fourier series. Here, uh, we know the exponential terms and we know the coefficients, right? Uh, and it's a sum. So this is the Fourier series, the exponential Fourier series. It doesn't say, but we assume omega naught is 1, so there's, there's technically an omega naught here. So this term is for n equals 3, uh, n equals negative 3. Negative 3. This term is for n equals negative 1. This term is for n equals 1, and this term is for n equals 3. Right? Um, and yeah, so at this point, we just start to compute, uh, we wanna find, oh, sorry, the, the, I didn't write the question. The question is just like, draw the spectrum. Draw, um, you know, magnitude of d n versus t and phase of d n. So let's compute all this, right? So d negative 3 equals 2 plus j2. So the magnitude of d negative 3 equals the square root of 2 squared plus 2 squared, which is root 8. Whatever that is, just ever, 2 root 2. Um, yeah. Then the phase of d n is going to be the tan inverse of 2 over 2, which is tan inverse of 1, which is something, I don't know, what's tan inverse of 1? I don't know my calculator. I'm looking everywhere for my calculator. Uh, I'll just use Wolfram. A little bit overkill, but I'll use Wolfram. 45 degrees, yeah, pi over 4. Okay, thank you. This is pi over 4. That makes sense. That's new power. Um, or pi over 4, wait, pi, yes, pi over 4, that makes sense. Uh, anyways, so there's our first, there's our first magnitude phase pair. What about d negative 1? D negative 1 is j2. J2? Yeah, j2. The magnitude of d negative 1 is 2. The mag, uh, the phase of d a- and this should be negative 3, negative 1. I don't have to do any tan business. Just imagine it on the complex plane, right? J negative 2 is like that, right? It's, uh, it has a phase of pi by 2. There you go. And what's the length of this vector? That's it. When it's just purely complex, it's easy. D1 is 3 minus j2. Uh, what is the magnitude of d1? Magnitude of d1 is the square root of 3 squared plus 2 squared, which is 9 plus 4, which is root 13. Which is nothing. That's root 13. Phase of d1 is equal to tan inverse of, now you gotta be just careful here, minus 2 over 3. So how do you deal with this? I like to just draw the picture now. So I draw the picture. This is the imaginary axis. 3 negative 2 is here, right? That's 3 negative 2, like on the imaginary. On the imaginary, uh, complex plane. So that's 3 negative 2. I'm looking for either this angle or this angle. I honestly like to find this angle. I like positive angles. I don't like negative angle. Um, so when I wanna figure this out, right, the, the way I do it, this is how like, this is also like, how I teach in grade 11. This is how I teach the grade 11s how to do it. Um, so I find this angle, reference angle, that angle is tan, I hate this pen. I don't know why I keep using this pen. Cannot see anything. Um, but I just run out of colors. So that angle is tan inverse of 2 over 3, positive 2 over 3. That's something. Can someone tell me? Or I'll just type it in here. Arc tan 2 over 3. Nice number? No, not a nice number. So whatever. Arc tan of 2 over 3 is, uh, 0.588 approximately. Approximately that. Um, but I don't want that angle. I want 360 minus that angle, right? So the phase of d1 is through, uh, 2 pi minus 0.588. Or whatever, minus tan inverse of 2 thirds, which is, you know, approximately pi minus that is, uh, 5.69518. Approx. That's our. Hopefully that makes sense. I think everybody, I mean, if you're not okay with that, tell me. I'm happy to explain. But yeah, that's kind of how I do. Um, oops, okay. They're almost done. Uh, we need d3. D3 equals, uh, what was d3? D3 was 2 minus 2j. 2 minus 2j, is what I'm trying to say. Um, yeah, so the magnitude of d3 is the square root of 2 squared plus 2 squared, which is 2 root 2. Uh, the phase of d3. Once again, we wanna figure out the tan inverse of negative 2 over 2, which is the tan inverse of 1, essentially. But let's, let's draw this out, right, again. So here we have our complex plane, 2 negative 2, 2 negative 2 is here. Right, again. So tan inverse of 1, positive 1, right, or negative 1, sorry, tan. Hate that pen. Why do I keep, delete this pen. Make it red in there. Make it, uh, like, hey. This is tan inverse of, uh, negative 1. Right? I think, yes. Tan inverse of, no, ten verse of 1, ten verse of 1. Ten verse of 1. Uh, that will get us, um, uh, that angle, whatever that angle is, and inverse of 1. Is pi over 4. So this angle is pi over 4. But I don't want, I don't want this angle. I want this angle. So that's 2 pi minus pi over 4. So this is equal to 2 pi minus pi over 4. Uh, right, which is 8 pi over 4 minus pi over 4, which is 7 pi over 4. So it's probably, my face is probably covering that, so. 7 pi over. Um, there we go. I mean, I'll have to approximate this, like, 5. I mean, this is approximately. Yeah, that's weird that I got that, but that should be right. Um, this is, I need the phase plot. D1. Oh, did I do something wrong? D1. Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the issue, I think. What did I do wrong? And inverse of 2 over negative 2 over 3. Oh, did I write it right? D1 is 3 minus j2. And d0 was oh, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, 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 yes. I, I, I just added brackets here for some reason in my head. That's it. I added brackets here. There is no brackets there. So the this is d1. D1 is negative j2, which means that our magnitude is 2. And that our angle all of this can go away. Our angle is, um, what's our angle? Our angle, it's negative j2, so that means that this is our vector. So our angle, call it negative pi over 2. So this is, um, negative, whatever, don't need to do this, just negative pi by 2. There we go. And we still have d0. D0 equals 3. Right? That's what this constant term represents. D0 equals 3. That's, that's for, uh, n equals 0. So the magnitude of d0 equals 3, the phase of d0 equals 0. So finally, you can plot everything, just, you know, I, there's the answer. I'm not gonna plot everything. I don't wanna waste the time. But there is, uh, there is how you calculate these values. The hard part is calculating these values. Yeah, the 3 by itself, I, I made a mistake. I added the brackets around this. There's no brackets around that. Um, this is just, um, I did get 2 for that, right? D, d1, magnitude of 2, yeah. Um, and so yeah, there's all our terms. This is our d negative 1. Uh, d negative 3, I mean. This is our d negative 1. So our d0, this is our d negative, uh, d, uh, yeah, d nega- d negative 1. This was d1. I'm messing up what I'm saying, but we, we have it. Yes, 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 yes. This is, sorry, this is our d negative 3. This is our d negative 1. This is our d0. This is our d1. This is our d3. That's what I'm trying to say. If our calculator can directly convert from the complex numbers to magnitude phase to be silly to show the manual work for each term. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know. I was, I was, uh, barking. Guess I wouldn't care. I don't, it was my decision. You don't have to show your work. That's not my decision stuff. Great. Let's try a Fourier series. Oh, we have 6 minutes, so we'll, we'll go, we'll go like, just a little bit over, just 5 minutes over, so we have 10 minutes, let's say. Um, I wanted to do this question because it's really interesting. Um, if I run out of time, then we'll just, uh, we'll just skip to the end. Fourier speedrun is exactly what we're gonna do. So, I mean, yeah, basically, here is, you know, our, the question is, find the Fourier series of the top function. And from that, you can find the Fourier series of the, the second two signals, right, by, by the transformations. So this is the one we're trying to find the Fourier series for. So let's do it. Find this Fourier series means x of t is written as the sum. N goes from negative infinity to infinity of d n e, oh, just say x, x, um, j n omega's naught t. What's d n? D n is written as 1 over the period, uh, of the integral over the period of the function um, times e to the negative j n omega naught t dt. What's omega naught? Omega naught is 2 pi over t naught. What's t naught? t naught is our period. Period of this function, this one here, is, just peak to peak is 8, so 8, which means omega naught is 2 pi over 8, which is pi over. If I run out of time, I'll just type this into Wolfram, then do it. So let's begin. What is this integral? 1 over 8 integral over the period. What's the period I'm gonna choose? I'll choose from, uh, negative 4 to 4. Negative 4 to 4 of x of t. Now, x of t is not a single function in that time, right? It's broken up into two line segments, so I have to just say x of t for now. X negative j n pi t by 4, right? Because, uh, omega naught is pi by 4. Okay, you gotta figure this out now. I can't type into Wolfram yet. What I have to do is I have to separate it into two integrals. So, um, from, from negative 4 to 0, it's this line. What is this line? This line has a positive slope of a half, uh, because this is, this is 2. Um, so it's 1 half t plus 1, and this is, this is also 2, that is a negative. Uh, and this is a negative slope of a half plus. So from negative 4 to 0, it's neg, uh, positive 1 half t plus 1. X negative j n pi t by 4 dt. And then from 0 to 4, it's negative 1 half t plus 1. X negative j n pi t by 4 dt. Okay, well, so this I can type into Wolfram. This I can type into Wolfram and I'd get something. Um, okay, but how would you do it if you're not, if you're not, like, obviously, we're not able to use Wolfram? So, uh, you gotta distribute, right? You gotta distribute, uh, the x into the bracket, so let's do that. Uh, even in my practice, like, even when I did this by myself, I didn't get to the end. Uh, obviously, during the tests, we have to, but I will try my best not to here. Um, integral from 0 to 4 of, well, it's gonna be, um, we use Euler's equations? Don't we use Euler's equations? Like, like what? How? Yeah, like you mean, but Euler's equations, like, turning sine, turning this into sine and cosine? Replace the x terms? Um, yeah, why wouldn't that work? Sounds like that would work. You have a constant. And then you have d n. I can't tell if that would make life easier or harder. You would then have to integrate t in the end, t times cosine something t, t times cosine alpha t. That's harder to integrate. It is doable either way. So integrating t cosine alpha t, whatever, alpha is any constant. Um, uh, this is like, there's a formula, if you wanna know the formula, right? But it's integration by parts. But this integration by parts is a little harder. Here you have to integrate t x alpha t. This is also integration by parts. It's a little easier, I think. So either way, you're doing integration by parts. I think this integration by parts is a little easier, so I'm gonna stick with this. Um, uh, so let's do one. That's difficult. Um, so uh, the first integral is 1 half t x negative j n pi t by 4. Um, dt plus integral, integral negative 4. integral negative four to zero of x negative j n pi t by four dt. So that is that. So it's the one-half t, let me just be clear here, one-half t and then the one. And the other integral to do still. So the under, other integral is minus one-half integral zero to four of t x negative j n pi t by four dt plus integral zero to four x negative j n pi t by four dt. I think he changed it to sine and cosine after he integrated me. Um, so yeah, we do this. We do this. Uh, let's, let's try it. Let's at least, let me just say, like, I just want to remind you all also how to do integration by parts. We're not gonna get to the end of this. We're not gonna get to the end of this. But I will just explain how to do the other parts of the question. But, uh, let's just do one integration by parts. Let's say I want to integrate, uh, t x. So just one IBP example. Um, so let's say I want to integrate, uh, integral negative four. Uh, I'll just do positive numbers. So zero to four of, um, t x negative j n pi t over four dt. But I'm just gonna switch this negative four. So this is integration by parts. The way you recognize this is integration by parts is because you have a product of functions. One, which gets simpler when you differentiate. One, which either stays the same or gets simpler when you integrate. So this just stays the same when you integrate in terms of complexity, but this gets simpler when you differentiate. So that's when you want to use integration by parts. So how do you do integration by parts? This is where you do the little table. So you do u, uh, uh, u dv du v. U dv. Yeah, u because, yes. It doesn't really matter the symbols, but you, you basically set these up. So du, this is u, I mean. This is du. But you choose u and you choose dv. So the thing you choose for u is, um, the thing that gets simpler when you differentiate. So t gets simpler when you differentiate. And x negative j n pi t by four dt gets simpler or stays the same when you integrate. So anyways, du equals dt. And then integrating that is just going to be, um, four over four j over n pi and pi. N pi x negative j n i t by. Any di method enjoying? Is, is that, is that, um, is that what black pen, red pen does? Is that what? Yes, okay. I think, I think that's, uh, I think it's a black and red pen. So that's, uh, yes, I've heard of that, but I've never done it, actually. Good, yeah. Okay, maybe I should learn it. Maybe I should learn it. Anyways, now you do this integral as, um, it's uv minus the integral of v du. So uv is going to be t, well, four j n pi t x negative j n i t by four. Uh, still evaluated from negative four to zero, minus the integral from negative four to zero of v du. Um, so that's going to be, uh, well, I'll move the four j over n pi x negative j n pi t by four dt. Fantastic. So doing this now, well, it's evaluating it zero is zero, so you're just adding, um, subtracting, so it's minus four j n pi negative four x negative j n pi times negative four over four minus four j n pi. Um, and now we need to integrate this, so this is just, again, this is just four j over n pi x negative j n pi t by four evaluated from negative four to zero. Blah, 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 blah. At this point, it's just this. Will you care which integration by parts method we use in the midterm? Probably not. Most likely not. Almost definitely not. No, definitely not, actually. This is not an integration course. Not a course on teaching it. Whatever, this is something. Uh, and, uh, you do that. So that's, just remembering integration by parts like this is the, is a real thing I wanted to show there. Okay, just quickly, what do we do with the other? With the, with the other parts? So let's assume we turn this x of t into some coefficients d n. Okay, great. So what are the coefficients of this guy? This guy has just been translated, uh, to, two places to the right, two places to the right. Now this is at two. So that means we've had, uh, that means we're looking here at x of t minus negative, so t naught is negative two. Right? Because you've gone gone to the, yeah, you've gone to the right. Is that right? Hold on. No, that's not right. T minus, no, no, t minus. You've gone to, yeah, t minus two. You've moved to the right by two. Sorry, I overcomplicated. T minus two. When will the recording be posted? I'll post it tonight on my YouTube. Tonight I'll post. Um, so this is x of t minus two, which means t naught equals two. Great. What does that mean? Well, we can compare it to this formula that I showed earlier at the end here. If you have x of t minus t naught, then it's d n e to the negative j n omega t naught. So this is now going to be, uh, this like is gonna be d n e to the negative j t t. Is there a t there? I think there was a t. T, uh, yeah, no, no t, j n omega naught t naught. J, so is there a negative? Yes, j n omega naught t naught. So in this case, it's two. And that will be your new coefficients. And then what about this one? This one is the original function, but it's been compressed, right? It's been compressed by a factor of, well, this was at four, now it's at presumably one. Uh, it's not very clear, so I guess that would be, that would be six, so this would be five. So the peak was at eight and then it went to five. So it was compressed by a factor of what? By a half, right? It was at eight, so it's at four. Yes, by a half. It was, it was compressed by two. Um, so this is x of two t, right? That's what we're looking at, x of two t. What is this? Well, this is actually, the coefficients aren't gonna be any different. It's the n value that they correspond to will be different. So basically here, right? If you imagine drawing, writing this as a Fourier series, right? It would be the same d n's, but now the fundamental frequency is, is, um, uh, so, uh, omega naught equals, well, it's going to be, uh, two, well, uh, two pi over t naught, which is now going to be, um, uh, t naught is four, so two pi by four, which is pi over two, right? Which is two times the original, right? The frequency is two times the original. So this, omega naught of this equals two times the omega naught of, of this. So basically, we're just gonna have the same coefficients, but they're just gonna be assigned to a different n value. Because this is two w naught times, well, not times two, sorry. This is a j n times two omega naught t. And this omega naught refers to this omega naught up here. So it's just the n value that it corresponds to will just be divided by two, basically, because it'll just be double. Um, I'll, I'll maybe post the original solution for that. I'm out of time now sadly, so I can't, I can't actually draw that, but that's the only thing that, uh, also the final slide of the last recording, of the last lecture, will be, um, explains this a little bit more. So if you're confused about that. But what I wanted to show is that if you know d n, you can find the d n of other transformations. Uh, I'll be uploading the PDF for all this too. Yes, I will be. Is the midterm gonna prove Fourier series properties? We're not gonna have to prove, I don't think we're gonna have to prove anything. I mean, maybe something simple, but nothing crazy. Oh, provide. Sorry. I, yes, I, I thought I said prove. Uh, provide. No, there's, I don't think so. There's no formula sheet. There's no formula sheet. So you do just have to remember some properties here. Um, something I have to work on. Okay, guys, that's, that's my time. That's our, that's our two hours and a little, a little bit more. So, uh, good luck, everybody, on the exam. I hope everything goes well. I hope this review session was helpful. Uh, lots of things we didn't get to sadly, but lots of things we did get to. No problem, guys. No problem. Good luck, everybody. I'm here for a few more minutes, uh, for any last questions. Um, no problem, guys. Have a good night, everybody. Yeah, stay, stay around for just a few more minutes. No problem.